Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, October 15, 2018. We're here for the Board of Selectmen meeting. And like always, we'll ask everyone to please stand for a Pledge of Allegiance to start the meeting.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we'll give the Westwood Media the opportunity to record the meeting. Ask if anyone else wishes to record the meeting? Okay, seeing none. Under the Chairman's Update, we have two things for you. The first that we'd like to announce is that the Town Offices will be hosting a Town of Westwood Annual Trick or Treat again this year. It'll be on Tuesday, October 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00, except at the Senior Center of the Council on Aging where it will be from 3:00 to 4:00. So you can visit Town Hall with Police Headquarters, the Main Fire Station on High Street, the Islington Fire Station, the Main Library, the Rec Department, or the Carby Street Municipal Office Buildings will all be holding Trick or Treating between 5:00 and 7:00 on October The East Street Bridge update, which you might want to pay attention to because it's going to make a traffic nightmare for most people. Work is going on for the bridge installation on the bridge deck with, it says, with no impact on the roadway. The bridge decks will continue until final preparation by Mass DOT there, right near Mass DOT Yard at the end of Grafton Ave., and they will be moved this weekend. The weekend shutdown will be October 19th through the 21st. Originally, we thought the road would shut down on Friday. Now we understand that'll happen Saturday at midnight. So Friday traffic will not be closed off as we had previously reported.
So really Friday night at midnight, Saturday morning at midnight versus Saturday, the end of Saturday?
Correct.
It's beginning of Saturday.
Yes, Saturday morning, I guess.
Yeah, so just so we're...
Midnight on Saturday morning.
So we're clear.
So if you're out late Friday night, you might have to go around the detour.
You'd be, yeah.
All right, so a detailed detour route will be implemented. There'll be proper signage. I understand that the message boards will be out very shortly if they're not out already.
Supposed to be.
The MBTA will transport commuter trains between the Norwood Station and the Dedham Station. So there'll be no train service between the Dedham and Norwood Station. You'll have to be bussed in between. The work will be completed Sunday night at some point, and the road will reopen on Monday morning for the morning commute. The work will consist of precast insulation for the new bridge abutments this weekend. Okay? The second weekend, we understand it to be scheduled right now, is November 9th through the 12th. That will be a complete roadway shutdown starting on Friday. So that weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the bridge will be out completely. The work will consist of the bridge replacement and the track alignment, and it's going to take all weekend to get that straightened out. There'll be a crane in the middle of the roadway on East Street, so no one will be able to get through. The police and fire are well aware, and they are making alternative arrangements for that weekend as well. The same detours will be in place. They'll be running buses between Franklin and Dedham that weekend, not just Norwood Station. And the train service will continue from Dedham over at the Dedham Corporate Center into Boston, but before Dedham Corporate that weekend, you'll have to take a bus. The bridge will be moved from the DOT Yard to Stratford Street, and a robo-call will go out to all residents letting them know about the closure that weekend. The police will post temporary no parking signs on that to make sure that we can move the bridge out from the Mass DOT Yard. Once the tracks are installed, there'll be round-the-clock track work to make sure that the track and the road are open for Monday morning commute. Okay? So that's the weekend again of October 19th and 21st, this coming weekend, and then November 9th through the 12th.
Mr. Gillette, where can this, all that we were just told be found?
We're going to have it all over. It's going to be on the web. It's going to be on the streets and flashes. It's going to be Twittered out. It's going to be out on Facebook.
With this level of detail? Will there be a way to get this level of detail?
Well, only putting out the October, we're not going to put the November stuff.
That's fine. That's fine. I just want to know people have a place where they can get it.
In that level of detail for October, this coming weekend, the 19th, yes.
Okay.
And it's also on the official, the official Town of Westwood Facebook page?
Yes.
We're going to tweet it and put it out every day this week. We've already put it on the website as a news alert at the top, so it's in red at the top of the website. And we will do a robo-call on Thursday of this week to, a town-wide robo-call.
In addition to that, the neighborhood itself will be flyer, and we'll be sending, remind me to do this tomorrow, I didn't do it yet, we'll be sending out to the neighboring communities, the information to their town administrator so they can get it out to the community.
And also make the post office.
And the post office.
Let the Norwood Post Office know because it will interrupt certain routes trying to get through onto the bridge for mail delivery.
Okay.
Amazon will have to figure it out themselves. All right, under scheduled action this evening, first we have the teen librarian position. So Trish, did you want to come up and Joan? So we understand that you're having trouble filling the teen position because we don't have enough hours to keep people.
Yeah, we posted now twice, and we've lost really great candidates to other towns. And in one case, it was hours before a final offer was to be accepted. So it was a little disheartening. We did go out twice. The second time, first time, we had 45 applicants, so pretty substantial pool. Second time, a much smaller pool, much different level of abilities. And in every single case, when an offer was going to be made, we lost a candidate to another town with benefit eligible positions.
That's okay, that's not you.
But we think that 24 hours will work versus even more than that?
I do, I think it makes it more of a quasi-full-time position as opposed to really a fill-in part-time position. I think, I know from personal experience, my first children's librarian position was a 24-hour position that ultimately grew to more full-time hours, and it took several years. But, you know, it was a position that was, it did give you a commitment to the institution, and I think that's what we're not seeing, is that ability to commit to working for Westwood.
You good?
Okay. I would move that the Board approve the posting and filling of the teen librarian position as a 24-hour benefit eligible position.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Third time will be the charm.
Third time's a charm, right? Exactly.
There's a reason for that saying.
Okay, next, we have a public hearing for a change in manager for the Westwood Courtyard. Nora, and ladies, do you want to come up and introduce yourself for the record?
Welcome.
Hi.
So would you just introduce yourself for the record for us?
So I'm Amber Poptrich. I'm the current Assistant General Manager.
Okay, Amber?
I'm Erin Mitchell. I'm the current General Manager.
Okay. Nora, did you want to take it from there?
Yeah, so the manager of record has changed. Amber is the current manager, but she was not the previous manager that the license was issued under. So there's a request to change the management, to have Amber the new manager going forward. She has begun the job already. She has been operating as the manager.
There's no issues. The Alcohol Review Commission is fine.
Alcohol Review Commission recommended you manage so that the board accept the change in manager. I don't think I have anything else to add that the licenses...
Still pending at the ABCC?
Yes, so it actually will go to the ABCC.
Once we approve it, okay.
Amber, I'm just curious, a previous experience before coming into this management role that where you might have also had comparable responsibility for the alcohol licensing?
So I've been in hospitality for about 10 years in Massachusetts. I haven't worked with alcohol before, but I have in New York as well as Las Vegas where I was born and raised. And I've been with this property now as Assistant General Manager for just over a year.
And how's it going, just out of curiosity?
I mean, I love it. I'm, so I'm a resident of Westwood, so it's a really nice commute. And it's, I mean, I love the property. I've been with it since a month, two months before it opened.
Yeah, and business is going well?
Yeah, it really is. It really is. We have a great group with us, our customers as well as our staff.
No, I don't. I would move that the...
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
So because this is a public hearing, do we have any comments or questions from the public? Okay, seeing none.
Okay. I move that the Board grant approval to the change of manager application for the Westwood Courtyard pending ABCC approval.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming in.
So then we had, listed on our public hearing, we had a change in ownership for the Westwood Courtyard as well. However, that has been continued, so we should open the hearing?
Yes, and then continue.
Okay. So I'm opening the public hearing for the change in manager for the Westwood Courtyard.
Ownership.
Ownership.
Ownership. Excuse me, ownership, sorry.
Okay, I move we continue that, the public hearing until November 26th, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It will be continued to November 26th. So moving along, we now have a public hearing for the...
Oh, that's the wrong one.
...new ownership at Smash Burgers.
Are we doing a change in manager for Not Your Average Joes?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was...
Yeah, it's the wrong one crossed out.
Okay, that's the wrong one crossed out, okay.
Change in manager for Not Your Average Joes.
Michelle? Yep.
Change in manager for Not Your Average Joes.
This is the one.
Okay.
Hi, this is Michelle O'Brien.
Hi.
Hi, Michelle.
Michelle is the new manager operating at Not Your Average Joe's restaurant, similar to the example at the courtyard. She's already taken over as manager, and is now asking for the name on the license to be changed.
Okay. Questions?
I guess I should have asked the same question before, but I think there's been a while before, between managers where you've been there, so you're now aware that...
Yes.
...any future changes need to be more timely?
Absolutely, yes.
I'll ask the same thing. How's business going?
Business is going well. I've been with Not Your Average Joe's since 1994. Most of my career with them has been in Massachusetts. I was in Maryland for a year, and then I got transferred here to Westwood. I'm loving the community, the people that I'm in contact with. I've met some really nice people. So my commute is long. It's an hour. I'm in Rhode Island.
Change that.
Okay.
Is it a public hearing?
It is a public hearing, so because it is a public hearing, do we have any questions or comments from the public?
Hearing none. I would move that the Board approve the change in management for Not Your Average Joe's pending, is this pending ABCC approval as well, Nora?
It is, yes.
Pending ABCC approval.
Okay, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you all.
I'm sure we'll see you in there.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have the change in ownership for Smash Burgers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that, this was actually, I think it was advertised for a hearing previously, and it was continued until this date because the closing took a little bit longer than originally anticipated. The property has now changed hands.
Just for the record, it was October 15th that this was, excuse me, it was originally on, at our last meeting, and was continued to today. So, okay.
Yes, so they have been operating under a temporary CV license, which we gave them to continue working without serving alcohol. They need to apply for a new license to the ABCC. So they weren't able to continue their old license with the change in the business. It was not just a change in ownership entities, it was a complete change of ownership where the property was the, a different, I believe it's the, the parent corporation now operates it instead of a franchisee.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And there are no issues with that?
There are no concerns, no.
So Nora, I don't know, do all Smash Burgers have alcohol?
I believe they do. This is the only one I've ever been to, so I can't verify that, but it was my understanding that they do.
I hate to admit that on the record, but I haven't been there yet.
So they're not operating, they're not serving alcohol now?
They're not. They're serving food only, food and alcohol drinks.
And they want an alcohol license, and yet they're not here?
Yes, yes.
That's a problem. I have a problem with that. Did they know they should be here?
I can't speak to that. I don't know. I know that Karen Flynn, our licensing coordinator, has been meeting with them and expected them to be here today. So the manager is Israel Sullivan. I believe he has been the manager under the old entity and is the manager under the new entity.
Yeah, I think they need to be here before us.
Right.
That's why I'm...
And they can continue to operate under the temporary common victualer?
Yeah, so the common vicu license goes through the end of the year. So we took back their alcohol license and gave them a CV license under the new name that is valid till the end of the year. They'll come back to renew it. So they could come in at that time and request a license.
Well, when they're ready to be here, I'll be happy to entertain them.
It's only weeks away before we start approving license.
I can't say why they're not. I'm surprised.
So I would move that we continue the hearing. I would continue the...
Next meeting, yes.
Or November, or November 26th.
Say the 5th and what...
Yeah, I would move that we continue the public hearing to November 5th, 2018.
Have a second.
I will second that.
At the Selectmen's meeting, beginning at 7:30. So it's clear.
Okay, I move that we continue the public hearing to November 5th, 2018 at 7:30 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on the small cell antenna, Cell Co. Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless.
Doesn't look like he's here either. He's supposed to be here.
Can you just put this on?
So take it out of order?
Yeah, just take it out of order.
We'll come back to that because it is a public hearing. Next.
Pedro Lang?
Here.
Pete is here, but Garrett is not. Do we want to wait for Garrett?
Wait for Garrett.
Okay. Pam, looks like you're up. By default, you're moving up pretty quickly, Pam.
Good thing you're here.
Out early tonight.
And you just came in, just in time, Pam.
She's smiling.
Thank you.
We know you don't want to stay too long, so you know.
No.
Marie, you're welcome to come up and sit with Pam since you waited for her.
Okay, thank you. We like to come in at this time of year to the Selectmen and give a financial update. We look at how did we close out our last fiscal year, FY '18, looking at revenue and expenditures, and then give a quick status update, kind of remind people where we are for our current year in FY '19, and look at a couple of our key indicators, and then outline for the Board what the next steps will be as we start to move forward and go through the budget process for the upcoming year. So looking first at our closeout of FY '18, first on the revenue side. This chart shows our total revenue budget for FY '18, about $96 million, with almost 80% of that coming from our tax revenue, as shown in the blue. And we talked during the budget process that because we work on, you know, such a large percentage of taxes as our revenue, that that's a difficult financing model. But from a budget-to-actual perspective, this is, you know, a very steady revenue source. The way that the state assesses and allows us to do taxes, it's a very reliable source of revenue. So taxes, we collected $74 million on time. Our real estate collections are consistent and strong year to year. 98% of our taxes collected on time. Our residents do a terrific job of paying those bills and paying them on time. And again, as 80% of our revenue comes from taxes, it's really the key component to our financial stability. Just want to point out two numbers, just our past due taxes. There's two areas where we kind of have taxes that are allowed to be not paid on time. One is tax deferral, and that's the program for eligible seniors in town who can decide not to pay their taxes until their home is sold if they meet the criteria. Our balance in that account at the end of June 30th is $475,000 cumulative all years that we've had that process in place. The previous year's balance was $495,000. So just want to point out, new people come onto that program each year, and then others come off the program. So we have about this balance every year. Terrific program for people to participate in, but we pretty much average about this amount, and it, you know, fluctuates as some come on and off. The other similar program, Tax Title, our balance on June 30th, just over $500,000, again, cumulative all years. And we're billing $74 million a year in taxes. We only have $500,000 in Tax Title. The previous year's balance, about $654,000. Again, those balances are really pretty steady each year. We, the Town Treasurer pursues the Tax Title accounts and moves those along. There's sometimes new properties each year, but others kind of moving out of the program, so kind of a continual flow. So our tax revenue is really kind of always steady, reliable, in good shape because it's our main source of revenue. It means that our overall revenue is always in good shape. Just a quick look at our two other main revenue sources, state aid. We took in about $5.9 million in FY '18. The chart shows our state aid budget each year for the last several years. And you can see, it's just been a very small, steady increase each year, about $100,000 to $200,000 a year. Those who have followed this chart for a longer period of time for the state knows that this chart over a much longer period looks like a wave, where we kind of have continual, you know, increase from the state, and then we'll have a drop-off when they have budget problems, and then an increase again. We're in kind of that just steady increase year to year. Not a lot of new revenue coming, but steady, no disruptions during the year, no mid-year cuts that we've seen in prior years. So state aid fine for FY '18. And then just one other revenue source, our local receipts revenue. Revenue we collect on the local revenue fees on various accounts, but the main source is the motor vehicle revenue. This account, as it's been the last couple of years, very strong collections, total of about $6.2 million in the local receipts category. That's up from about $5.3 million in the previous year. The bar chart there shows the motor vehicle collections. We've had a very steady increase of that since FY '09. Prior to that, we did have some reductions in motor vehicle when the economy dipped. So '09, from eight to 10, 11, it was a little unsteady. We've had a pretty steady increase since then. So that's been strong. We've talked to the Selectmen during the budget process. We try to stay conservative in estimating this revenue in our budget process so that we don't get caught in that period where many communities were when that economy turned down. So as the motor vehicle revenue comes in, any revenue over budget will flow into free cash, and then we will apply that to the next year's budget process.
So about what level do we end up forecasting? I forget the number of...
I think we're just below three in our forecast, so we have room if we were to see that decline again. And one other item to point out, that one at the bottom, the building permits, it's just another area where we've had very strong activity and strong revenue the last couple of years. Again, one of the items that's making this local receipts category very strong revenue right now, with all the building activity in town, the permits that people pulled, the bottom there, we've listed what's the actual revenue from that over the last couple of years, $682,000 in FY '18, $700,000 the last couple of years. That's very strong activity. So local receipts were conservative in our budgeting during the budget process so that we're not caught if we were to see a decline in either of those two main categories. But very strong revenue during FY '18. And then just quickly on the expenditure side, the main area of spending in our budget is our operating budget. In FY '18, that was $83.7 million. That's for our school and municipal operations. The way that the state requires us to budget, we're not allowed to overspend that budget, so there's never an over expenditure in our budget area. And typically, we have some small, what we call turnback or unused budget. For FY '18, the turnback is $1.1 million, which sounds like a lot, but it's about 1% of the budget. The bar chart on the bottom shows the turnback every year for the last several years, so that's right in line with where it's been the last couple of years. Looking at that by category, in this box in the middle, we're showing by general areas of our budget where that $1 million turnback is coming from. And primarily, it's coming from that benefits budget, our benefits fixed cost budget in FY '18, about $645,000 unused budget. It was about $570,000 the year before. We've talked before that that budget is about $14 million, and that's where we pay our health insurance, our payroll taxes, other insurance and payroll taxes. Those are things that can fluctuate during the year, so just the way we have to budget for those accounts will always have some kind of turnback like that. And then the reserve accounts, so those would be the FinCom Reserve, other areas where we have things set aside. This is the portion that we haven't used.
Will the new tax law affect the, you know, under the benefits package, will that affect it much, do you know? The new tax law that went into effect, will it have any impact on how much of a turnback or how it's...
On our benefits budget? I don't believe so.
Okay.
Or our payroll taxes. They're more just a percent of our payroll. I don't believe there was much change in that with the federal tax law, you're saying?
Yes.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So again, very steady kind of results that we've had the year before. So great revenue and expenditure results for FY '18. One budget I just want to point out is the snow and ice budget. It is the only budget that the state of Massachusetts allows a community to overspend. We, our snow and ice budget expenditures were $721,000 in FY '18. The bar chart on the top there shows the spending each year in that category for the last several years. And we've talked about our historical average is about $450,000. Certainly not our actual spending in the last couple of years has been higher than that. And last year was pretty high, the $721 as compared to other years. So we spent $721,000 total. Our budget was $300,000. We supplemented that budget at town meeting with transfers from the reserve account for $300,000. And that leaves us $121,000 that we will raise on tax recap as part of our tax rate setting process for FY '19.
Pam, can I just ask that this year, when we talk about snow and ice, can we maybe not go back in time so far? Because my guess is that cost of salt...
Labor.
...per hour labor costs have all escalated, and it's, we're almost comparing apples to oranges, and I don't know where, I don't know where we see the, you know, how far back we can go and look at it on an apples-to-apples basis. But can you work with Todd on that so we...
No, absolutely.
The conversation is more...
Probably more of a five to six year look back.
Looks like five.
And I also, I'll pose this, I think people's expectations for what they want from snow removal is higher. They want access to the roads sooner. I mean, the minute that you can't get out of your driveway, I'm sure there are calls, you know, it's, it's kind of like the, the level of service has risen because the demand has risen for higher service.
Yes.
I think we do an excellent job, but that also means we're probably spending more to staff up sufficiently to get the snow removed. So I just think we should look at it slightly different than we have in the past.
Yes, we'll do that. Just quickly, the middle section here just looks at what we've budgeted, and, and the Board, we, a number of years ago, the town was budgeting $140,000. We increased that to $250,000 with a goal of trying to work that up. We moved to $300,000. And if you'll recall, in last year's budget process, at the very end of the budget, when we had a good swing in one number, we were able to add to that. So we did increase the budget to $450,000 for FY '19. And I'll just point out that other item last year, there was the change by the state and how we have to vote to allow us to deficit spend the snow and ice. It moved from the selectman to the town administrator, and last year was the first year we did that, and that worked well. So, we would continue to do that again this year.
Can I just say again, just report to us. Let us know in some form where we're...
Yeah, I'd copy you on a, copy you in the finance commission on letters.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, just to finish up on FY18, the last item is looking at our free cash certification, which is really the results. So, we went through, the revenue came in strong, expenditures all in line, snow and ice not that large of a deficit. So, we have had our free cash certified by the Department of Revenue, a step we have to do each year. And I want to thank Maria O'Leary, town accountant, for all the work she has to do and what she has to submit to the state. They review all of our financial information and year-end close before they certify. So, our free cash number was certified at 5.8 million, which is a great number, stabilized and strong. That is right in line with what we had the previous year, 5.9 million. So, again, it sounds like a very high number, but it's just our good, steady number that we normally have. We will use that. The bar chart shows our certified number each year and then how much we use towards the budget. We only apply this in our budget process to capital and other one-time needs. But having this number certified and now available as we start our budget process will let us do similar things that we've done in previous years. Transfer some of that to our stabilization, apply higher amounts to capital budgets that you've been doing the last couple of years, handle any one-time needs that come up during the town meeting process. Last year, it was the school municipal building security project that came. That's something that we can handle using the free cash. So, terrific shape, a really nice closeout from FY18. And just quickly, a reminder of where we are in the current year, FY19. The most, the largest item that we deal with in the budget process, again, our operating budget. The town meeting approved a $91 million budget for FY19, and the bar chart shows a distribution of that budget by areas, with the schools in the blue, the municipal in red, fixed cost in yellow, and our debt service in green. The selectmen, this bar, this table below shows the percent increases in those operating budgets over the last couple of year period. The selectmen have worked very hard with our departments and our school department in FY18 and 19 to make sure that we're having good, healthy budgets for those areas, but that they are within our sustainable growth rate. So, you can see for FY19 that we're in the 3% range as we were in the FY18 budget process. And that's something that the board has spent a lot of time working with, all of our different groups with. And really, that's our key financial indicator for how our budget process works, how we can stay within Prop 2 and 1/2, how we can help moderate the tax bill growth. It's really this area right here, being able to work with our departments to provide great services to the community, but stay within that growth, those growth levels that we can sustain through Prop 2 and 1/2. And sometimes while those, the selectmen know how difficult that can be, because there's tremendous pressure to provide great services to the communities, and our school municipal budgets do terrific with that. But what we have tried as a town to do, and the board has emphasized, is not grow beyond what we can continue to provide in services. So, sometimes you'll see in the news, other towns have ups and downs and layoffs and cutbacks to services, and Westwood has, has tried to avoid that by just really having steady, moderate growth with the operating budget.
And so, PM, have you communicated that to the wider audience, that we're trying to replicate or decrease?
Trying to replicate that.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, and what we've been able to do with the consistent free cash results over the last couple of years, we've been able to work with our groups that if there are any one-time basis in their budgets coming outside of the normal growth, that we're able to try to help with that on a one-time basis, and I think that's worked very well. So, that would be, again, the message that we're trying to work with our departments going forward. Just looking at the capital in the current year, the bar chart shows the annual capital budget, what we call our base budget for school municipal capital. So, in FY19, in the green, 1.7 million, more than double what we were able to do just a few years ago in FY14, and this has been something that the selectmen have really committed to, and we've just tried to do better and better each year as far as maintaining our buildings, our facilities, our fields, our roads in town. Our target is a bit higher than the 1.7, so it is an area in our finances that we still need to continue to direct some work towards. But what the board has done the last couple of years is, as I mentioned, use the free cash to have additional capital beyond the base. And in FY19 budget, that was an additional $857,000, where we try to work with departments and take any large projects they may have that they could not really assume in their base capital and handle them in that additional article at town meeting. We've had three solid years of that now, where we've had anywhere from 700,000 to 900,000 in additional capital beyond the base. And I know the departments, municipal and school have greatly appreciated the selectmen's attention to that area, and they've really been able to get some important capital projects And we would be able to continue now to do that again in the FY20 budget when you start to look at that. Just a couple of quick status on a couple of our different areas that we have in finances, the capital fund. We currently have a balance of 1.4 million in that account. The town last used that account in 2016 to replace the high school turf field for 650,000. This was an account where we've tried to provide a savings account for large capital projects. There are many coming in the next couple of years for town and school, and this would be a vehicle that would allow us to fund those capital needs without going for debt exclusions or debt overrides to the community. So, important tool. Looking at the town debt, the, the selectmen have really, over the last couple of years, taken advantage of a very favorable borrowing climate. The town has a very strong bond rating, a AAA rating. It's been excellent interest rates over the last couple of years. I hope we're not seeing those change, but it might be. We've also had some old debt retirement, and the selectmen spend time in their budget each year, their budget review, looking at the debt cycles and when we would see debt dropping off. So, we had three very strong bond sales over the last couple of years, 16 million, 10 million, and a $3 million bond sales, over $30 million since 2014, that we were able to get excellent interest rates on to do some very important projects for the town. I just wanted to really show, this is our chart that shows our long-term outstanding debt at the end of each fiscal year. And if you look at the right-hand side, what the selectmen have done by taking on this debt at a time of low interest rates and at a time that we had debt dropping off, we've been able to issue some large debt, and we've not issued any new debt since 2016. And very quickly, our debt has come back down. So, you can see that we dropped up, popped up to the 49 million in FY17 because we've had debt drop off and no new debt for two years. We've come down quite quickly in FY19, back to 40 million outstanding. So, I think really, especially now as we see this interest rates turn, it was a great use of the debt to go out and kind of get some major things done and bring our debt right back in line. So, I know at some point when we were issuing those bonds, people were concerned that we were taking on too much debt, but not at all. It's come right back down, and we're right in line with all of our debt margins.
And we're still below a capacity level for the size of our town.
And we still have a low capacity level.
A lot, yeah. Very below.
Yeah, our debt margins are well within all of our financial indicators. Just super quick on our OPED liability. There's been terrific progress made on this over the last several years. The bar chart shows the annual appropriation into our liability. We've been able to build up to the 1.4 million as shown in green. We only now need to increase that about $25,000 a year to meet compliance. So, this was something that a number of years ago was a major issue for the town, but the board's been able to build that into our ongoing budget process while not taking away from any of our other operating budget needs. And really, now we're at a point where the town is in great shape with this issue. And that's a really important component of our bond rating and when we talk to the credit rating agencies. And then just our stabilization fund, the town's main savings account, another main component of our credit rating. This bar graph shows the balance in the fund at the end of each fiscal year. So, right now, in 2019, as shown in the green, we have 3.1 million, just about where we need to be. Our financial target is 3.4 million, but we're, we're right in good shape with that. And for the last several years, we've really just only needed to do about $100,000 transfer from free cash into this account each year, and it allows us to stay in compliance. I, I might need to increase that in the FY20 budget to about...
That was my question, yeah.
Yeah, 125 or 150. The target is a percent of revenue.
Yeah, so we'll never catch it if we don't...
We'll never catch it.
Oh, yeah.
But it will not have a significant impact on the budget or other areas, but I might need to...
But it's amazing what we've done since the last recession to build it up so that, you know, if the rainy day issues come, we, we've built it to a level where we can use it if necessary.
We can use it if necessary. So, if we saw dramatic decrease in that motor vehicle revenue or state aid, and some of the board members remember, we had years where like all of those things had dramatic issues, and it affects what we can do with the operating budget and having this type of savings.
And then you start peeling back any capital investment, and that, it's, it's a bad cycle if you can prevent that from happening.
Yes. So, we've done just very steady attention to this account, and it has us in good shape. And then just finally, to look at the meals and hotel tax. So, the meals tax was, both the meal and hotel are options, local options that the state provided that communities could adopt, and Westwood Town Meeting adopted both of those. The state already collects meals and hotels tax, and they just add the local option on to that. They collect the revenue, they distribute it. So, our town meeting adopted the meals tax effective January 1, 2015, and the hotel tax at the 2016 annual town meeting. And then just at last fall's town meeting, town meeting set up an account to put that revenue in and restrict it, and it takes a two-thirds vote of any subsequent town meeting to use this money. These charts here in the middle show what we have taken in for revenue. So, the meals tax, since it's been a couple of years longer, that bar graph shows on an annual basis what we've collected in the meals tax revenue. So, it started out very small, 56,000 in FY15. It has now built up to about 370,000 a year that we took in in FY18. So, that's primarily coming from the new restaurants at University Station. And the board allowed that article to go forward to town meeting because our residents were paying that tax...
Everywhere else.
At Legacy Place, at Patriots Place, and in Boston. So, this is revenue coming to the town now from other people coming to restaurants in Westwood. The hotel tax, FY18 was really the first year that we saw that, but really with the Marriott Hotel coming online at University Station, we've seen a quick acceleration of that revenue, moving from $8,000 a quarter up to 64,000 in the last quarter. We took in $129,000 total in FY18.
Pam, from a mechanic's standpoint, if, when we go to town meeting, an annual town meeting, if we want to use the revenue that came in the last year, we could direct it to something and not have it go in the account we created, correct? So, let's say 300,000 comes in in FY19. Does it have to go into this account we created a year ago, or can it be voted at town meeting for a use?
It really has to go into the account first. We put it the same town meeting, you know, kind of do it in and out, probably.
Okay.
But we would make sure, and one of the things I want to talk about is you've asked your long-range committee to kind of look at this revenue and give you some guidance. And one of those pieces will be that there would always be some minimum in the account. So, you would always have some money available to use for projects.
I was just wondering if, in the event we develop a predictable plan on how to use some of it, would it need to go into the account and be voted out? So, that's why I'm asking about the mechanics, just something to think about.
I understand you say...
It would still need town meeting vote.
Yeah, no, it's kind of like an IOLTA account. You have to have paperwork to show that it went in and the paperwork to show that it came back out.
If you came to a, at some point where you said we wanted, you know, 100,000 of this to go towards, if it was something identifiable, you could vote that at town meeting. We could, we could...
For a period of time.
Change the allocation at town meeting to just do that every year going forward.
Okay, that's, I'm just wanting to know what the options are.
Yes.
Okay.
We only use this revenue once. We let the revenue come in till we kind of would see what it would be. And when the selectmen allowed this to go forward, they stressed that this would not be used for ongoing operating budget because this is a revenue source that can fluctuate. The economy dips, so we, you know, don't want to use this to fund our regular services. But May town meeting did use about 432,000 of this for two projects, like the high school tennis courts, do a major HVAC project at the high school pool, both projects that are used by a wide variety of residents. As of June 30th, after that use of the 400,000, the account has about $750,000 in it.
That's great.
And then we would add to that with what comes in during FY19. But we have discussed already with the long-range that the, the selectmen are looking for recommendations of use, develop a policy like other accounts. So, that would be what's the minimum that we have in there, what are the types of things that we would use this for.
But PM, I think, I think the projects that we've used this for so far are appropriate.
Yes.
Right? And so, I foresee other, especially recreation, one-time hits or expenses and things like that. I'm not so much, I'm not really worried. If we're not going to commit this to operating budgets, I'm not so worried about having much of a minimum. I mean, you, you seem to stress that. Why are you focused on having a minimum?
Well, sometimes when we have an account, a financial account for some reason, that's part of our policy. So, the policy might say that we would want, you know, one year's worth of revenue in the account, or we would want to have a plan to replace money if we went down to zero. We kind of have that with our stabilization balance. So, it's just more from a policy discussion.
Okay.
But yes, this is ongoing revenue.
Right. Because I, I mean, I think, I want the stabilization accounts healthy, but I think when we have some money and we have an identified need, th- this is what that should be for.
Yes, and those two projects, we would not have been able to fit into our regular capital budget. It was important they got done. You know, we do want to make sure that our residents see the, the value of this money. If we, you know, didn't have those revenues for those types of projects, we would have maybe had to go out for an override. This revenue coming in because of the University Station project and, and drawing people to those restaurants lets us take care of those projects. So, it's great revenue. We would be applying some of it in this year's budget process. I would expect that by December, we would have for you kind of the recommendations from long-range as to what you might consider. So, that's really our closeout of '18 and kind of a refresh of where we are in the current year and just a quick outline of what we'd be looking at for our next steps with the board. We have just a few more pieces to close out in FY18. Some of our departments still have some things to report in, our, our audit. We had the onsite work completed. They're just, we're in the process of finishing up our financial statements, and once that is done, the audit committee would be coming into the selectmen and reporting to you on that. But everything went smooth, and our departments do a terrific job in being ready for that audit, making sure that things are in good shape. We would then, one other piece that we need to do for current year fiscal '19 is our tax rate and our tax classification. So, our property values are currently being completed and certified by Department of Revenue. We are in a full reval year, so that's a little bit more extensive than a regular year, and a full reval now is only once every five years. So, it's even a little bit more extensive than it was when it was the every-three-year process. So, that's happening. We currently have your next meeting, November 5th, as your meeting to set that shift factor, which does the distribution of the commercial and residential rate. That will then give us the tax rate to get certified. And so, at that meeting is when we can take a few slides and walk through the tax bill, what's happening with the tax bill, what the selectmen have been doing to try to control that growth in the tax bill. We can look at that. And then finally, that would, we get by that at your November meeting. We would then start our next cycle, FY20.
The assessors meet Tuesday, I think, right, according to the...
The assessors are meeting tomorrow night. They have a meeting. They'll be looking at the update on where they stand with the values. They're taking a preliminary look at the, at the split tax rate to get their recommendation ready for you. So, then after that, going forward with October, November, we'd be starting our 2020 budget. We have already had preliminary meetings with our long-range committee, our budget steering committees. So, we will continue to move forward with all of those groups and then start to come into the selectmen with that material as we do each year. And that's it. And thank you for taking me earlier.
Thank you.
Great update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm back in time.
Good work.
Thank you, Pam.
Everybody.
Yes.
Verizon's...
Verizon.
Okay.
Is it Smash Burger?
And so is, so is Garrett, so, you know.
Do you want to do Verizon?
Sure. So, we're going to switch back to our public hearing for Verizon.
Was someone here from Verizon?
So, this was our public hearing on the small cell antenna from Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Dan? Is that you, Dan?
Yeah, Dan Klasnick. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I think you may or may not recall, we had permitted one of these perhaps last year, two of them actually. And Verizon Wireless, as we had discussed, is continually reevaluating its network to make certain that it's providing the best possible service to the town of Westwood. And as that evaluation is undergoing and the network demands are increasing exponentially as far as data, voice, and other services, Verizon Wireless is always endeavoring to find new ways to compensate and provide additional network capacity and, and coverage. So, in this particular instance, we've submitted a petition to the Board of Selectmen for a grant of location to install what's called a small cell antenna on a utility pole that's on Washington Avenue or Street, Route 1A. The facility, just like the other ones, will consist of a single antenna that's installed on this particular instance on the top. It's a about 38 inches tall. It has a diameter of 12 inches. In addition to that, it's necessary to install some other equipment on the utility pole, what we call, or what are remote radio heads. There are two of those, and those are necessary for the signal propagation. There are two of those, and those are necessary for the signal propagation. Eversource requires that we establish a new service at each location, so there will be a utility meter installed. And then there's some additional cabling necessary to run between the remote radio heads and the, and the small cell antenna at the top. There is no ground equipment, no disturbance on the ground necessary for the installation. Everything is sent back to a central hub location. And as I said, the reason we're doing this is we're trying to address capacity issues on the network. This particular location is an area where there are two, what we call macro sites, that are attempting to provide service to this particular area. But based upon RF engineering analysis, those sites are now becoming overtasked. They can only handle a certain capacity, a number of network calls and other demands. So as that happens, the area will naturally shrink. So this is the way to fill in that necessary capacity.
When you say the other ones, were these the ones on 109?
It was one on 109. I think there was another one at University Avenue that I, that was really the state's responsibility, as I remember.
Yeah, that was on the State Highway.
Did the one on 109 get installed? I'm just wondering, because I didn't notice anything.
You know, I never noticed it. I meant, I keep meaning to go look at it.
I don't know that it was installed yet.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
I don't think it was either, okay.
This one will be.
Well, they will both be eventually. Sometimes there's some.
You're ahead of the.
Yeah, regulatory issues that they have to go through, get it real estate ready so they can install it. They have to work with Eversource, coordinate with them as far as the installation. So it does take a period of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's a nice alternative to a petition for a large pole or a freestanding antenna. So I don't have any issues.
Well, since it is a public hearing, so Nora, where's 183? What's that?
Near Wentworth Street.
Yeah, 183 Washington. What's it near? Closer towards.
North of Fairview.
Yeah.
There it is.
Wentworth Street.
It's, it's just beyond the commercial district.
Okay.
I think that's right before St. Dennis.
So this is Al's, is Al's building?
That's the talking line, I believe.
Is that the insurance company here?
I think that's Patterson Insurance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it used to be, it used to be Patterson. Yeah, Eastern now, okay.
And then you see Wentworth, and on the, on the left side of the street is St. Dennis Barkin.
Yeah, okay.
Sometimes looking down from above, it's hard to tell.
It is. I was looking at it going, all right, I can't visualize this unless I go looking. Maybe I could have done Google Maps, I guess, and figured it out, but.
The main difference between this and the one that you have previously proved on High Street is that this is a new pole, not just an attachment to an existing pole. And the new pole plus the attachment will be about ten feet higher than any other pole in the surrounding area. So it'll be slightly different where it's, the one on High Street was an attachment on an existing.
An existing pole, okay. Since this is a public hearing, do we have anyone who would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing none?
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen meeting this evening in the town of Westwood, notice, notice having been given and public hearing held as provided by law, hereby order the Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless hereby granted a location for and permission to install a small cell wireless antenna and the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures on pole number 3122 and maintain such equipment to be placed there on, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the public way known as Washington Street Route 1A near 183 Washington Street as requested in petition of said company dated September 5th, 2018, with the condition that all components of the wireless facility be painted and maintained in a color acceptable to the community and Economic Development Director and/or the Town Planner.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Michael.
I was so tempted to say that.
I was going to say it.
It's an old joke.
Bad one, too. I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Take a nice colon, Nora.
National.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on Hedge Row Lane abandonment. Garrett and Attorney Zaka? And Nora, sorry, Nora.
I have no idea. So this, this application, you may recall, there was a, an agreement that was before this board about a month ago that allowed for the release of one address at Westwood Estates. The issue was all around Hedge Row Lane. There was an existing street there. The Westwood Estates subdivision relocated Hedge Row Lane, and we needed to abandon, first discontinue, the other way around, abandon.
Abandon first.
Abandon first, and then eventually discontinue the old hedge row. And there was a concern that after you abandoned it, you remained responsible to some degree for the maintenance of the, of the road. So there's an agreement now that the, the developer has proposed that they will take over maintenance and handle the, the old road, which will have the pavement removed. They will landscape the area and maintain those extended driveways until such time as the property is formally discontinued and becomes private property.
Okay, I mean, my, my, I don't have an issue. I'm just trying to figure out, like, my memory was, we voted to abandon the property to the developer.
You voted to support a process.
Okay.
That would involve the abandonment.
Right.
And then the eventual discontinuance by town meeting and the development of the new Hedge Row Lane, which allowed for all the addresses on the, there were three house lots that had frontage on the old hedge row. It would allow for property to change hands after town meeting grants approval down the line.
Okay.
And those properties will now, will then have frontage on the new road. But there's an interim period of time before town meeting acts where the old hedge row continues to exist. So what we're asking this board to do is to abandon the, the use of the roadway in that right of way.
If I may, Gareth Orsman, special town council, we're not giving any property rights away tonight. When you, I don't know, I don't know if the town of Westwood has ever abandoned a road, but it's statutory process.
We have.
Eighty-two, eighty-two.
We have, up on.
We have on University Station.
Yeah, the top of University Station around headquarters of Eversource.
So the town doesn't actually own any of this property. It's all privately owned. And, and part of the agreement that we talked about in August was a land disposition swap between those private owners. The only part we were concerned with was that if we chose to abandon this way at a public hearing here tonight, that we not be liable, liable for anything. So that agreement, and the agreement before you tonight gives you coverage against any liability and an indemnification from the.
Developer.
The developer. But the right, technically, it's a public access easement. When you abandon the road, the public access easement stays. It's still there. It's still open to the public. The town just has no liability as a matter of statute for maintaining it or for anything that happens on that property. To actually get rid of that public easement, you have to go a step farther and you have to take it to a town meeting and get the town to vote to, quote, "discontinue" the roadway. And then the public easement goes away and it's purely private property. So we're just at the first step where we're, we're voting to discontinue our maintenance obligations is another way to do it.
And the agreement that you've already signed was to allow for, at that final stage after town meeting discontinues the road, to allow the property owners to swap parcels so that they all have frontage on the new road because their existing configurations. Had they kept those configurations and then received the portions of the street after it was discontinued, they would not have.
Some of them would not have that frontage, right.
Right. So that was what that.
And are we all aligned? Is there alignment with the, okay.
Yes. There were originally three house lots, three privately owned lots. There are now two. The developer actually purchased one of those, and that will become part of the subdivision. And the two property owners that were outstanding, signed that last agreement in favor of you going down this process. So this is just to cover your liability between now and town meeting voting to discontinue.
And then last packet, there was the, the agreement between the residents and the owner was.
That covered us, too.
We were shown that.
That covered us, too. But one of the things you voted on at the August hearing, or meeting, it wasn't hearing, was that we put together an agreement to deal with the maintenance obligations in addition to the liability during that period when you're not.
Between us and town meeting.
Because basically what's going to happen is what looks like roadway on paper will be turned into grass.
Right.
And it's got to be a notice that there's no roadway there anymore. That's just a statutory obligation. And the trust needed to, the developer needed to take on those obligations, and that's what this agreement does, make sure that all those obligations that we are no longer taking on as a town are now being taken on by the developer.
I'm going to have to read this part, right? It's, the proposed action is to convene a public hearing.
So we did. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing.
Okay. So just from a practical standpoint, they're going to take, take up the asphalt?
Except for where the driveways are.
Except where the driveways are. And then there's already, is there already a new roadway? I think there is, right?
There is.
Added to the houses for the construction?
It's at its base course, but there is a roadway.
From a, from a standpoint of anyone who went there, they're just going to see a new road. They're not even going to notice technically that.
Right. If you go there today, if you go there today, you see the new road and the old road coming off of it.
See that little semicircle, right.
Coming off of it. So this would eliminate the semicircle and most of the old road. It would allow the driveways to continue to meet the new road.
Okay, okay. I mean, from a practical standpoint, you're going to go there, you're not going to even notice that it's.
You're not going to see it.
It's been moved, so then.
Yeah.
If it was your first time there, you wouldn't know that we did anything.
You wouldn't. And the, and the two property owners that are, have their access through here are aware of the change, so.
Okay.
You good?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen find that the surplus layout of old Hedge Row Lane is abandoned and unused for ordinary travel and that the common convenience and necessity. Am I reading the wrong thing?
We should open it up to comment in case anybody wants to hear before we make those findings, if anybody wants to say anything.
Sure, since it is a public hearing, we'll open it up to anyone from the public who would like, want to be heard on this issue? Oh, we do have someone. Yes.
To be clear, that the developer, if you all vote yes, the developer then will maintain until town meeting votes.
Yeah, that's, that's the agreement before us, so yes.
Does that answer your question? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so any other questions?
Thank you for the reminder. Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen find that the surplus layout of old Hedge Row Lane is abandoned and unused for ordinary travel and that the common convenience and necessity no longer require this public way to be maintained in a condition reasonably safe and convenient for travel. That the Board declare that the town of Westwood shall no longer be bound to keep this public way in repair. That the Board direct special town council to prepare and file a written declaration with the town clerk that the town of Westwood shall no longer be bound to keep the surplus layout of old Hedge Row Lane in repair. That the Board execute the agreement with Canton Street Realty Trust dated October 15th, 2018 in the form provided to the Board by council and signed by David Spiegel as trustee of Canton Street Realty. And lastly, that the Board cause to be released street addresses for nine lots within the Westwood Estates subdivision to be numbered and known as 25, 26, 29, 33, 34, 37, 38, 41, and 42 Hedge Row Lane. To vote in favor of the motion if the evidence and other information supports such a vote and sign the appropriate agreement.
And out of necessity, I will second the motion.
All in favor? Sorry. I'm tired. It's been a long day.
It was a long sports night.
It was a long sports.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have the agreements here to be signed?
We do. Should I give these to Mike?
Yeah, give them to Mike. I think you had.
These are Q origines. I'm going to make that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, moving along to our new business. Under new business, we have the appointments of election officers. So we have a request for the Board of Selectmen to appoint four new election officers in time for the November election. Town clerk has prepared and is asking the Board of Selectmen to approve the following individuals as election officers. Karen Perita, Jennifer Zondeman, Joan Broderick, and Joanne Peterson. All appointments will expire in June 30th of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, we have that Tom McCusker.
Oh. Tom McCusker.
Has officially announced his decision to retire as town council, effective December 31st, 2018, and we are going to review the process for deciding how best to fill his position. Tom has been town council since 1976, some forty-three years, and has a role he has previously served in Natick. Tom is a former Westwood selectman himself and has always provided sage advice to the representatives of the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, town moderator, department heads, boards, commissions, and committees. And finally, at this town meeting, finally spoke as a citizen. A former selectman, always referred to as the fourth selectman. His vast knowledge of Westwood's history, decisions and environment, coupled with his knowledge of municipal law, will be almost impossible to replace. I say almost, Tom, you know, they, you know what they say. That's right. His service to the town is, concludes on December 31st of this year, and Westwood will move into a different era. So, Tom, on the behalf of the board, I'm sure, we can't thank you enough for your service to the town. Yes?
I don't know what to say.
You gotta say something.
I get a little.
Might get a little teary-eyed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a chance, I'm sure, to.
Yes, we will.
Properly celebrate your.
Retirement.
Tenure here.
I'm going to guess it's probably going to be his favorite club, too.
Let's make it happen. But I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. You've done a lot of work. We appreciate it.
And so, so Mike, we have really two options, right? We decide to hire someone to replace Tom, or we stick with our outside council?
Or we go to outside council.
Go to outside council, Tom.
Because the way we have arranged it here, since Tom wasn't always in this position, some twenty years ago, I can't remember exact date, Tom became a part-time employee of the town with official office hours in town hall when anybody could go and see him. He was often there way longer than me. He was compensated for twenty hours that he was there. It was an excellent arrangement, and for any council beyond what Tom could work on or wanted to work on or had the expertise about, we would work on getting outside council, labor council, development council.
Alcohol.
Alcohol council, all, all areas that got covered by outside council. And then from time to time, we'd have litigation that, you know, was a matter that really needed an expert opinion. Building, the high school building was one of them that we went and got outside council. I polled the executive function group. We had a long discussion about it, and quite frankly, the department heads really appreciate having Tom available or, and his replacement, someone available in town hall that they could call. They don't have to worry about a clock ticking away for billable hours. He's there, answers calls, sometimes about routine matters, sometimes about complicated matters. They just feel free at any time that they want to approach him. So I believe, as I do, that this arrangement was a good one. The other alternative is that you can go out and get an outside firm that does this, does just about everything I just mentioned, town council as well as other services. Some communities love it. That's the way they do it. I personally think that you oftentimes get, on legal matters, you get one opinion that fits generally for all communities, but isn't specifically tailored for our community. And to me, we lose something in that. I think one of the great advantages, and it was read in the comments about Tom, was Tom was very familiar with Westwood. He was a resident, he was longstanding resident, former selectman. So we knew this community. And it showed in the advice he gave us and the direction he gave us. And I think that's very beneficial. So our belief would be to continue with that. I've surveyed other communities. I've given you copies of the responses I've gotten. I surveyed a few more than this. And I also gave you a copy of a report that was provided, that was done in Nantucket several years ago, but it's, you know, the service is very similar. You know, it gives an indication that a lot of communities approach having town council services and their legal services provided in a similar manner to us. But there are communities that do it differently. The price difference is not negligible. I mean, you know, a couple of outliers, but we're all spending about the same amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, like everything else, I suppose it depends on what's going on in town at the time.
Oh, yeah. We've had some years where the budget has been significant because we had a lot going on and other times when, you know, we're not really, we don't have a lot of outside council. It's not town council services that really affect the bump. They remain very stable. It's, you know, whatever the litigation matters that we have going on or legal opinions that we need. I will add that we do supplement our legal services, like the development services are done with 53G, I think the Mass General Law statute is, where we get reimbursed 100% for the money that we're spending on our legal aspect of it to advise us. But, you know, that's a separate matter.
So my original thought was, you know, that we could try outside council for a little while and then reassess it and see where it really comes out to be, rather than just throw it out there to start to look for someone independent or part-time, because Tom was working, what, 20 hours a week or so? And I don't know, you know, it's just my thought.
Yeah, I think for me, when you completely outsource a professional service, I think in the long run, you spend a lot more because you're gonna incur a distinct cost for every call or for every service or for every issue. And it becomes another task for someone just to try to manage the relationship and the contract with the firm. So that's been my experience. As I was reading this, I thought a little bit about when we tried to go a little while without a town engineer.
We still without one, we still are.
Well, we agreed to recruit, right? I mean, we're trying to recruit.
Yeah, not finding great...
But the issue was that what we found, or what staff have found, is that they just don't have that person to serve as a sounding board and to create some creativity around issues and to have some sort of insight. I think for me, it's a two-part process. It's, I like having someone in-house who can manage the secondary use. I do think if we get to a point where we can replace, Tom's irreplaceable, but if we can find another capable 20-hour attorney, I do think there's a second process around, do we go to one firm that has the expertise? It seems like right now, we might use, you know, someone here and someone there. So that's kind of a secondary issue. But I think the first issue is, do we replace the part-time town council position? I think there's a lot of value, and I think there's a lot of risk in turning it solely over to external sources. That's just my thoughts.
So the idea, Tom, earlier in your career, the part-time council allowed the person to then do other legal work?
Correct.
Yes.
And that would be how we'd approach it? Because part of me feels like I've got...
Not billed to, just make the clarity for people at home.
Correct, not the town's responsibility.
Not billable, just 20 hours and here's your salary.
We don't have something in the contract that says you can't work anywhere else.
Correct, correct.
We do not do it that way.
No.
My, I have a lot of questions, because we just received that, this material this weekend. One of my questions is, do we need in-house counsel that's more than 20 hours? Is there some of the external work that could be absorbed by somebody if we develop a job description or we see who is out there and who might have the broadest capability and maybe customize the job around the person we can find? You know, maybe some of that third-party work can come in-house. I don't know. Again, I think it depends on who's out there, who might be available for the job. But I do think that we benefit by having town council at our meetings. I think of groups like the planning board, who should have town council at their meetings. I've long thought that. We haven't done it that way, but maybe now is the time where we look at it and say, you know, maybe the job changes some, and maybe it isn't 20 hours. So I'm just asking the questions. I don't know the answers, but I'd like you to think about it.
I have a question.
And I'd like, Tom, for you to give, Mike, your thoughts on it.
I have a question for Tom. Tom, it says that you previously worked in Natick. Did you work as Natick town council?
I was Natick special town council.
Special council, okay. So that was a part-time, too?
We never bestowed the special?
No, well, it was an interim situation there.
Was that full-time, part-time?
It was part-time, six months, I think.
But John, you mentioned somebody overseeing all the third-party council. I mean, is there work that we want to allocate to this position and make it more of a full-time position? I don't know. I'd like you to think about it. Is there HR work that should be done? That could be shared, you know, or partly covered by town council? Does, we've got our school committee chair here. Is there a way we can supplement the school committee? So they don't go, what are the, it's an opportunity now to look at it a little differently. And maybe we come back and say, you know, it's perfectly great the way it is. But I would like you to really sort of think outside the box a bit.
Sure. This was, as I said in my report, this is a preliminary report. I just got the information. So it's not necessarily complete unless you have a good sense of where you wanna go, and this is enough. It sounds like not, that they'd do a little bit more work and exploring. And I'm trying to get, what is it you want me to look at?
I think it's very interesting, though. So many communities are third-party around here. I spoke to Needham Selectmen. I think Norwood is third-party. I think Dedham is, Needham is not. They have our model. But the person I spoke to would like to go to outside council. That's one member of five.
And since I represented someone, I can tell you Essex has outside council, too.
So, and that doesn't mean that works for us.
Right.
So it's really interesting. It's kinda like, we'd like to know what it, we'd like to project out what it would look like if we did it.
That's why I kinda said, you know, why don't we try like a six-month period and see where, you know, how it works? And if it doesn't work, then we realize what our real need is, you know? It's gonna be a change, I understand.
Yeah, I just gotta take some planning. I mean, who is going to then be responsible for the oversight of the legal work? Like, I think we have to, I don't know if it's just fair to assume that the town administrator takes it.
He doesn't have enough to do. He's got, you know... Well, Tom's still have, Tom's still have two more months. Tom's still have two and a half more months, so he's not going away yet.
And Tom can share his thoughts and...
There are definitely...
Pluses and minuses to both sides.
And some very clear advantages to having in-house counsel available. So my thinking goes, if we're gonna do that, let's really do it and see how much of our legal work can be covered by that person. Because in the past few years, our legal needs have changed. We've had more development. That's naturally changed. We've had special counsel.
You just said Garrett, right?
Yeah, our union contracts, we always have that going on. I don't know, maybe they're more complicated now than they were before. Maybe they were always complicated. And I know we have labor council that we work with on that. But just some of the other items that come up. If we get a good land use attorney, maybe the planning board could benefit by that as one possibility.
So, Mike, is it possible that you can prepare like a list of us, of like when we generally go to outside council?
Yeah, I can try. I can look at the billable time. I can talk to Tom as to what he does.
And Tom, yeah. And I'm sure Tom, the best thing is that, you know, Tom's just there when they need a question. They just pick up the phone and call Tom.
Well, he's there for more than that. I mean, he represents us. You got a couple of cases still open. There are always cases. There's sometimes the cases, I don't even know they're out there, that Tom's working on. Mostly for the vermining departments, like the planning board or the conservation commission.
Right, the land use aspect is big.
Yeah, land use is huge.
It's always in my sense that those cases that you take on, I mean, they kinda pay the salary. And if we're just gonna farm out every one of those, our billables will go way up.
I very rarely hit that 20 hours a week.
Yeah.
On the other side.
No, I know what you mean. I know, I know.
And, you know, Tom doesn't attend planning board meetings, and maybe that is something we could add to the responsibilities. He goes when he's needed, when he's called.
Right.
But he doesn't go to everyone like he comes to board selectmen. And it may be that the next person would take on that responsibility, and it's something worth considering.
And I think you and Nora and Abby and others should talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, I'm just posing it as an idea.
So you're gonna get back to us?
We're gonna miss you, Tom.
Yeah, I'll work on this.
I'll talk to Mike.
Yeah, talk to Mike.
We'll work on it between now and the next meeting.
I have a brain session to catch Tony.
No, no, I know what you're saying.
Tom, the bad news is you're not leaving yet.
Depends on where your brain is, too.
Still got two and a half more months to go, Tom.
You can always come back.
That's right. You can always come back as special outside council.
We'll say we know where you live.
That's it. We'll find ya. Okay. Move along then? Mike, go do some more research for us?
I'll do some more research. And I'll try to get back to you by the next meeting. The 26th, the minimum.
Thank you. All right, so moving along under old business. We have to formally adopt our FY '19 municipal goals. So we've been through this several times. For anyone who's watched our meetings, that town administrator and executive function group have compiled a list of goals for their municipal apartments for FY '19. They are listed. In fact, we are, they are attached to our minutes for anyone who's interested, but we have a request to formally adopt them. Mrs. Hyde?
I'm, I think we've given it a lot of thought, and we're well into the year, and there're probably already being work done.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Just in key?
I'm good.
Good? Okay. So do we have something?
For the Board of Selectmen, I move that we adopt the town administrator goals for FY '19 and ask the periodic updates on progress, including additions and deletions, be provided over the course of the year.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Very good, thank you. Moving along, we have the review of the comprehensive plan steering committee. Is it just you, Nora, no Abby tonight?
It's just me.
Okay.
So we had originally thought that we would be looking for anywhere between nine and 18 candidates. We actually got 21 that have submitted applications. A few of those are still, we're still waiting for more information for them. We asked for application, resume, and writing sample.
Extensive.
Yes, yes. Well, we wanna make sure that we have people that are committed to doing the work and that are, have an interest or expertise in the area that they'd be selected to work on. So in addition to going through the 21 that were received, and Abby has contacted all of those that are still in need of putting in a little bit more information, it looks like all 21 could have a role and a role that they have requested. So each of the candidates filled out an application form and selected the areas that they were most interested in. And I think we can, looking at those and juggling them, Mike and Abby and I met today, and we see a way that every one of them could find a place that is in keeping with what they were interested in doing.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. I was, on Saturday morning, when I got the packet, I was, it was great to see the depth.
Yeah, and really good people.
High caliber.
Oh, high caliber. I was like so impressed. And even those that have come since the delivery on Saturday. So I do think it's like we have a lot of brain power, a lot of power there.
Yes, we do.
Like, utilize them all. Put them to work.
We intend to.
So open space and recreation is really already taken care of. And you said Steve Alenoff is the chair of that, has been serving as chair.
He has been. He has been serving as chair of that. That report is going to come out. And Steve is one of two members, two residents who submitted their application that had an interest in that area. Steve actually has even more of an interest in transportation. Charlie Donahue has an interest in open space and is serving on that committee as well. So I would actually recommend that Charlie take on that responsibility and let Steve do transportation. But I put together a draft list of...
Oh, you did what I was talking about earlier?
Yes, yes. Down at the bottom. What we tried to do was put everyone into a category that they had requested. So there were a couple of people that just requested any category at all, but most of them requested something specific. Some of them, for instance, Phil Shapiro was on this list. He just wants to do economic development. That seems to be a great place for him, so we placed him there. Others, Jack Wigan was willing to do anything. Thought land use might be the best place for Jack. Peter and Pam Kane would like to work together on resilience and sustainability. And then everyone else, we placed where we thought they had either requested it or showed a specific expertise, either professionally or through interests.
Yeah, I don't, I know tonight isn't the night we're doing it.
Right.
I would say, I'd echo what John said, really impressed with the people. Specific to the resilience and sustainability, I think we're still missing. And I think we have to look at that, because I think that, and I've spoken to you about this, Nora, that, that goes beyond the environmental.
Absolutely, it does.
It goes into the economics of the town, the financial stability, the public safety coverage, the roads, the, and so I, I really want us to look at that more because I don't want it to be a narrow view or a limited view. I really think it's very broad.
Much like land use, I see that element as weaving through all of the others.
Right. So we should have discussions before we come back to do appointments, because I just think that one, it's new, and it should be broad.
I agree.
So I don't think we're set up to completely with this team. I think they're great. I think we need more.
Okay.
Only two signatures, Mike, on that.
Yeah, you're right.
So we were originally thinking that two per element would work. Here, we're proposing, we have three extra people. We might as well put them to work, so a couple of the elements we would...
Funny, I had the same reaction as Nancy, on resilience and sustainability. So I just, that's the only one that I think, I see some other names that maybe I think might fit better. I mean, it'll defer to staff, but...
Yeah, so I'm gonna put this out there, but I almost think that Board of Selectmen needs representation on this resilience and sustainability slash staff.
Are you voluntary?
Almost. Not quite. I'm putting it out there for discussion. But I think it's a really big-picture element that we need to have. Can you guys talk about how you think that could play out? I mean, given the design of the committees?
Didn't we think that the boards and commissions would be invited to participate in any one of the areas that they wanted? So this was making up a residence.
So, right. So our idea for the steering committee was that it would be very much resident-driven and not draw from appointments from other boards.
Which is why I'm sort of hesitant.
Right. And the idea was for two, or in some cases, three individuals to take ownership of the element that they're given. And remember, it's not, they're not starting from scratch, except for with resilience and sustainability. All of the others are elements that exist, and they're bringing them up to date. And they would be doing that with staff assistance. So we would provide the data and information to the individuals. So for instance, let's take the housing element. The two individuals that would be appointed to update the housing element would be given the old element. They would be given all the new data since 2010 to bring, or since 2000, to bring it up to date. And then they would be given contact information for the housing partnership, for the Westwood Housing Authority, Housing Associates, for all the developers in town, for the Council on Aging, individuals that they, and boards that they would wanna communicate with before completing their update. Then those two individuals would work on their draft update. Then they would come to a planning board meeting where there would be a scheduled presentation of where they were so far. And then they would have comments from the general public and from representatives from each of the boards. So the board selectmen, the finance and warrant committee, the zoning board, any board that, that would have an interest in that particular area would be invited to come to that planning board meeting.
Yeah, I'll go back, though. I think resilience and sustainability is too, the perspective is not complete with this. So somehow, we have to figure out how to broaden that perspective with somebody. And so maybe it's not a member of the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen, but somebody who can provide that view. I almost wish Phil Shapiro could do something like that versus the economic development.
It's not, it's not an area that he expressed an interest in, but maybe it's something that he could be encouraged to, to switch over to that.
Yeah, it just, we need the work initially to understand that that should be incorporated into the assessment and the collection of information and everything else. So I have other ideas of moving this around a little bit, but I don't, I think we have to do that now.
Yeah, I have some thoughts, too.
Again, it's a great position to be in.
Yeah. I was surprised based on how hard, how hard the application was and how many people, well...
Well, the application is very...
I take that back, because it still says, needs application, needs writing samples, still needs application writing sample.
Most of writing samples and then, you know, requesting a resume.
Some of these people haven't produced a resume in quite a while.
Needed a resume. I couldn't tell you the last time I did one, so...
They accept something very, very basic. It's just a matter of making sure that they truly are interested in... And the writing samples could be anything from, I think someone sent us a paragraph and someone else sent us several articles they've written.
I saw that, yes. There were a lot of articles from that one person. Okay.
But the idea is that everyone will have an opportunity. And I also want to remind you that we also, there will be a public forum, a visioning session, where residents will be invited to come and discuss all of the issues. And there will also be a survey that will go out. So there'll be plenty of opportunities for input. And whoever's working on each element, I would envision contacting members of the Board of Selectmen as well to get their input on that element that they're working on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the fact that there are everything from real estate people here, you know? And I think that, you know, that could be important on the resilience and sustainability, because there's a big interest, you know, a big future.
So I'd also say that the entire steering committee will join together before the plan is put forward to the planning board. It's just that the individual groups will be responsible for their own elements. But then, once they draft that element, then everyone will have an opportunity to weigh in.
I would just encourage that we don't overanalyze. This is gonna be smart, but we don't, we don't need to make this so involved that we lose people along the way.
Right.
If, if things are going quickly, if the public isn't participating to a large degree, maybe they will initially, but then, having said what they may say, I just think we should move this along as smoothly and...
And I think the process of having just a couple of people take ownership and work together, for two people to work together on elements is an awful lot easier than a subcommittee of 10 or 12 working on that, where there's a lot of discussion, a lot of brainstorming, but...
Very hard to get things done.
Yeah.
So we designed this process hopefully to get a quick route to the ends that we're trying to achieve.
Yeah. I think people participating would appreciate that. I know some people thought about it and said, I can't predict how much time's involved, therefore, I can't get involved.
And I can certainly understand that, because we've tried this twice before, and it was quite a bit of time that went into the discussions, but we never really could get to wrapping it up.
Get emotion.
That's right. That's right. So just what we're looking for here is for you to take this information back and be prepared on November 5 to get appointments.
And in the meantime, give us some feedback as to your thoughts.
Yeah, I'll want to talk to you.
Yes, yes.
Or some things that got expressed that we want to, want to take into consideration.
And we still, we still are waiting for a few pieces of information. It could be that some of these 21 will decide not to submit the full packet, and then they won't be eligible. But assuming they all submit it, we could have up to 21.
Thanks, Nora.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Okay. I have something which is not on the agenda that I'm just going to announce. For Westwood voters, we do want to let you know that the state election is Tuesday, November 6 this year. But we do want to let you know that Westwood does have early voting. It is available for the November 6 state election. You can vote Monday, the 22nd, from 8:30 to 4:30. Tuesday, the 23rd, from 8:30 to 8:00 p.m. Wednesday, from 8:30 to 4:30. That's the 24th, 25th, 8:30 to 8:00 p.m. Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. And Saturday, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And the 29th, from 8:30 to 4:30. Tuesday, the 30th, 8:30 to 8:00 p.m. On Halloween, from 8:30 to 4:30. Thursday, the 1st, you can vote from 8:30 to 8:00 p.m. And on Friday, you can vote from 8:30 to 1:00. And Friday, November 2nd, is the last day to vote by early voting. All of the early voting is done in the Champagne Meeting Room on Carby Street. That is 50 Carby Street. And you can find this, I believe, on our website as well. Yes? So if you're interested in voting early, because either you're home for the weekend for school, you can vote even on Saturday and Sunday before the state election. It's available to all voters in Massachusetts and especially here in Westwood. Our next meeting will be here on November 5 in the police station, starting at 7:30 p.m. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Hyde?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.